We can have a moment of silence for all our first responders, essential workers, and our troops always return home. Thank you. Flight?
Flight 172 to the United States of America. United Republic where we stand, one nation, one tribe, individual liberty and justice.
.........................................................
Roll call?
County Commissioner Asquith Barber, you. County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple. County Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
County Commissioner Narra.
Here.
County Commissioner Canaro.
Here.
County Commissioner Dragoe.
Here. Do you have correspondence?
Yes, each commissioner provides correspondents to you on duty by the clerk's office. We've got this meeting, this correspondence we kept on file, and the circuit board for record.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Second?
All in favor? Nine. Opposed? Motion carries. Minister approve?
Board of County Commissioners, Rattler Meeting, December 30th, 2021, 6:00.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call?
County Commissioner Asquith Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
County Commissioner McCollum?
Same.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Glenn?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dragoe?
Yes. We have reports of commissioners. Commissioner Pauv, Adalas, and Barbara?
Thank you, Director Vios. Every January, Middlesex County participates in the Annual Point in Time Act, which is an annual survey of all homeless in our town. Survey of the homeless population will begin Tuesday, January 25th, and go through Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. The data collected will be used to inform homeless services and homeless prevention measures in Middlesex County. As of January 1st, the state pharmaceutical assistance to the aged and disabled, PAAT, and senior comp prescription discount assistance programs have spent income limits by $10,000. PAAT cuts drug prices to $5 for covered genetic drugs and $7 for covered friends. Income limits for lifelong disability assisting and the giving aid assisting have also increased by $10,000. For additional information to all and to learn more about other available programs, call the Office of Asian and Disability Services or visit the county webpage. And that concludes my report, Director Vios.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenny?
Just a real quick reminder, thank you to Chris, Gary, public works, and all those in stormy, salty, and pre-treating the roads for our last few storms that we had since our last meeting. Appreciate the effort they made, especially under the fact that COVID and everything goes off, there's not a way.
Captain? Thank you. Commissioner Chanel Scott McCall?
Thank you, Director. Good evening and happy new year. From the Arts Institute of Middlesex County, I'm pleased to report that the Arts Institute is launching the Young at Arts Program, which brings together the youth as seniors from senior centers and youth and public schools to experience both-type programming together. The dynamic program was created in response to the pressures of the pandemic and aims to foster cross-cultural and cross-generational sharing. This year's services are being offered in Portland, Araleth, Middlesex, and Hummerston. Arts Institute is also partnering with Hummerston Cultural Council and other community partners to present the fifth year of Windows of Understanding Program. Windows of Understanding is a public art initiative that utilizes art as a vehicle to bring awareness to social justice, address improving security, public health, and climate change. This annual program works with local artists and youth to create original artworks that are displayed in video fronts across the county. The public can see displays up through February 28th. You can view the work virtually and find a full listing of display locations as well as upcoming related events at www.windusofunderstanding.org. The Office of Superior Opportunity continues to offer its services virtually to county residents. These services include access to training programs, job recruitment, and business services. For more information, please call 732-745-3955, or go to the county website for additional information. We're also encouraging residents to text the word WORKFORCE in 732-978-9211 for daily updates on hiring events and career readiness workshops. Through the Office of Superintendent of Schools, I'm pleased to share that Middlesex County Vocational and Technical School Board trustees have selected Mr. Jorge Diaz as his new superintendent. His term will begin on April 1st of this year. Mr. Diaz is presently the superintendent of South New York Schools in Kansas. Director, thank you, Ms. Mary Ford.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Deputy Director Santin Hour?
Thank you, Director. From the Environmental Health, Solid Waste, and Recycling Division, although we are all fighting COVID and its variants, our divisions were able to successfully service our residents with the following programs last year. Additional safety precautions had to be enforced, but all Middlesex County towns were able to participate in these events safely. Here are the 2021 final statistics. Household hazardous waste collections. The divisions held a total of six events, which produced the following results. A total of 4,129 residents participated in these collections. A total of 451,240 pounds of hazardous materials were collected and disposed of in an eco-friendly manner. The cost of these programs was $285,923.26, which are grant-funded and thus with no cost to the taxpayers. Paper shred events. The divisions held a total of 22 collections over the season. 6,780 residents took advantage of these shred programs. 292,320 total pounds of paper were collected and recycled. The total cost of all these events was $22,500, which again was grant-funded. DEP conducted its annual audits of our divisions. DEP commended the efficiency of reporting, effective enforcement, and professionalism of all operations and our staff for yet another year. I'd like to commend and thank all of the divisions for their continued dedication, commitment, and outstanding service to all of the residents of Middlesex County. From the Offices of Health Services, the county continues to provide residents free of cost COVID testing and vaccinations. Please visit the county website to register or call our office at 732-745-3100. And that's my report, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Charles Hour?
Thank you, Director. Under the latest protocol, thank you, all who came out in 2021 and volunteered their time with the Middlesex County Conservation Corps. Throughout the year, volunteers collected thousands of pounds of litter, planted over 1,000 trees and shrubs, or a movement of invasion of white species from many of our county parks and other places. All this was done with very strict COVID protocols, keeping our staff to volunteer states. In 2021 alone, more than 1,500 people volunteered their time, which totaled 3,300 hours. Check out our park's website for more information for our next volunteer events, so you can come out and join us in 2022. If you're starting to feel a little cabin theater here, come out to our family ice skating rink, which is reopened this Saturday, January 22nd, with some outlook on overlooking beautiful Royal Park Lake. Enjoy the fresh crisp air while skating for pleasure during our open skating sessions or while taking ice skating lessons. Information about the ice skating rink and hours and pricing can be found on our website. The 2023 training season. I know somebody who already made a plan for the warmer weather of the spring and summer, so I want to let you know that our park's office will start taking pickings reservations for the 2022 season on February 1st. All reservations are being done on our electronic reservation system, so head to our website to find out all the information you need to know for your pickup at that time.
Thank you. I would just like to echo my colleagues' comments about thanking our public works employees for doing a great job in protecting the safety of our residents and visitors on the roads with the salt and the liquid chemical they put on them now to avoid any kind of ice setups. Okay, Mr. Kelso, do we have any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Resolutions to be avoided?
There are none.
Okay, at this time I open up the name to the public on any time comments on resolutions listed on the agenda. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. Charles Cradaville from Sedan Street here in New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, a community newspaper available online at newbrunswicktoday.com. I'll start by asking about 22-20. This is the professional service contract with Mr. Kelso's firm. Mr. Kelso's already paid handsomely, and he receives benefits as a county employee. Why is it also necessary for the county to pay his firm to do legal work? And how much is this contract worth?
This is a renewal of a contract that we do every year. We've used Mr. Kelso's office before, and we don't have any problems in supporting this resolution.
It is true he's paid in excess of $200,000 salary. Is that correct?
I can't answer that at the moment. I don't know if you think that's correct.
Okay, so that's correct. And then how much is this contract on top of it? Is there a not-to-exceed amount, or is this unlimited?
It's billed hourly at $170.
Unlimited?
Unlimited.
Unlimited, okay. Any idea how much last year's total bill was?
I'll do that.
I'll follow up. Also, I want to ask about the 22-37 contract with Forest Hill and Paulino, Hyman, and Stoll. Are they continuing to serve as the ethics board attorney as well as this contract? And what, if any, other work will they be doing for the county?
There's two aspects of the deal. They are the firm that represents the ethics board. This is a renewal of a contract that was approved last year, so they provide additional legal work that basically is assigned by my office on an absentee basis.
Special stuff.
Special stuff.
The 40, number 43, Unicorn HRO, what kind of services is this? HR management system?
So, yeah, I collect the payroll system.
Pay.
Over and over, payroll system.
Thank you. Can I get a summary for 56 and 57 of what the federal funds are going to go towards?
Sure. 56 is emergency services. Brand does from HUD. It's COVID-related, so it's COVID activities related to emergency shelter, street outreach, and homelessness prevention, respiratory health. And then 57 is the block grants. The first one, that money went out to small businesses in the very beginning of the pandemic. The second one will do with the, we have to work with the CDG communities that we get the money for. There's about 17 municipalities, so that still has to be planned.
Thank you. 67 is the, why is the amount that the depot is going to be paid increasing here for the cultural center space?
We extended the time limit there because of the new variant, and that's for cleaning for COVID measures.
Okay, so this is the continuation of the additional COVID-related.
Okay. 84 through 87 are all leases with the parking authority. Can you tell me how many? Which number, John? 84 through 87, leases with the parking authority for spaces. Can you tell me how many total spaces does the county rent from MBPA? How many spaces? Yeah, and I know you just recently cut a deal to rent the old abandoned supermarket, and that came with some free spaces. How much, what is the total number now after that? Joe, can you answer that at this time?
I can get it for you, George.
For you, all right. Commissioner Director, it's roughly a little over 1,000 spaces combined between, what, four decks?
Okay. And, yeah, the 112, I guess the members of the Emergency Management Council, whether or not they have any public input, public meetings, because I am very interested in that, I'd like to assist.
Commissioner, we do, right now we do four meetings a year. It's January 21st, the two meetings a year. It's made up of businesses, county employees throughout the county. I do not have a list of people we can get to listen to.
I can come to this meeting?
You can check with the state, or you won't be able to.
Okay. If I could talk to you after the meeting, I'd appreciate it. That's all the resolutions, sir. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Is there a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, does any commissioner have to vote on anything separate?
I do. Yes, I do. For me, 22, 113, and 22, 128.
Director, I have 22-69, 22-73, 22-74, 22-76, 22-77, 78, 79, 80, 81, and 22-105.
Okay.
I wonder what you have. 22, 23.
Okay, Mr. Kelso? Yes, Commissioner Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 22-20, the resolution 22-133, excluding resolutions 113, 128, 133, 69, 73, 74, 76 through 81, and 105. Would you vote to approve?
roses will have to come to the end. Second.
Roll call?
County Commissioner Asquith Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Canaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dragoe?
Yes. Now, Director, it would be appropriate to consider that two resolutions excluded by Commissioner Asquith Barber, and those are resolutions 22-113 and 22-121. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Right. Roll call?
County Commissioner Asquith Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Canaro? County Commissioner Dragoe?
Yes. Now, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner McCollum, and there are 22-69, 73, 74, 76 through 81, and 105. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Right. Roll call?
County Commissioner Asquith Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Canaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dragoe?
Yes. And now, finally, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner Canaro, and that's the resolution 22-133. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Right. Roll call?
County Commissioner Asquith Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Canaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dragoe?
Yes. At this time, I open up the name to the public. Please step up. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Brian Feldman, Bridge to New Jersey. Good evening, commissioners. I speak for countless people when I say thank you from the bottom of my heart for releasing the ram and two pigs to my sanctuary. Please visit our social media pages to see their transformation, so you can see how drastically someone's life can change when they're provided their basic needs, and hopefully this will compel you to follow through on your promise to release the rest of the animals from your zoo to sanctuaries who have previously committed to them. We've had all three animals immediately assessed by two vets, and they concluded that their poor health is due to human-caused obesity. I can produce these vet records for you if you'd like to see them. Just like humans, on inappropriate diets gain weight, so do animals, and not only is obesity unhealthy, but it causes secondary health concerns. So we'll start with Wally. The morbidly obese pig, he is fat-blind. Fat-blind, it literally means that fat is obstructing his vision. Pigs can go blind from this. It is an advanced symptom from being overweight, so his weight is something that should have been noticed, monitored, and controlled a long time ago by zookeepers. It wasn't, it wasn't, so now he's blind from overfeeding. We have him on a proper diet, supplements, anti-inflammatories, and in just 29 days, he's moving better, he's lost so much weight that he doesn't trip on himself anymore, and his stomach doesn't touch the ground. The fat from his eyelids is starting to go away for him to be able to open his eyes and hopefully have his vision back. He couldn't see when he was at the zoo, and nothing was done to help him. Now, I heard you to sense that the zookeepers can't control what visitors feed the animals, but that is literally their job. You run an animal haven. Their job is animal care. It's what they're being paid for. The ram, who suffers from a limb and a leg injury who didn't have any shelter. He is also overweight, which is worsening his arthritis, and his blood work showed low protein levels, which indicates that he wasn't getting enough protein in his previous diet. This is no longer a concern because we are feeding him properly. I have him on exercise, pain meds, he has his own shelter instead of the cold ground of the zoo, and other sheep of his own to play with, and never once have I seen him laying flat on the ground like this. He looks like this now, and he doesn't wipe a smile off of his face. Tank, the pig who walked on his wrists, who your vet said should be euthanized per the vet records you gave me, he uses his hooves now and leaps out of his shelter every day to play with his toys and new friends. He doesn't look or act like someone who is anywhere near needing to be killed, and I'm going to revisit this in a second. In just 29 days, these animals' lives have been completely transformed. Some of their ailments do not even exist anymore. Their basic needs are being addressed, they have supportive care, shelter, healthy diet, friends, and a better quality of life. Johnson Park Animal Haven. By definition, a haven is a place of safety, oasis, sanctuary, and refuge. Does Johnson Park sound like a haven to you? Commissioners, would you agree that the animals are actually worse off at Johnson Park, and that the evident lack of care is negatively impacting their health and quality of life? Now, upon picking up the animals, we received vet records from one of the pigs named Tank, and as I mentioned, euthanasia was recommended for him by New Jersey veterinarian Dr. Rebecca Link. A simple Google search will show you that in March of 2020, Dr. Rebecca Link was indicted by the FBI on charges of supplying performance-enhancing drugs to racehorses and falsifying medical and pharmaceutical records to conceal horse trainers' illegal racing practices. Are there two Dr. Rebecca Links in New Jersey, or is it safe to say that Johnson Park uses a veterinarian who was indicted by the FBI for doping racehorses? Why is it that animals thrive in sanctuary, but they suffer and die and disappear at Johnson Park? Your vets and your zookeepers would rather kill them than lift a finger to give them supportive care. On the day that I picked them up, I have one of your zookeepers on video referring to the ram saying, "He was fine here, but okay." Clearly, he wasn't fine, and you knew he wasn't fine because you released him to sanctuary. He is talking about living, breathing beings as if they are inanimate objects, and these are the people that you have in charge of your animals. This is why they are dying and languishing. None of us have veterinary training, but we can all see that something is wrong, and if we can see it, wouldn't you say that that's cause for concern? Wouldn't the animals be in grave health if the zookeepers were doing their job only a little? They only care about their paychecks, and they're not even earning it. On January 14th, you had a blanket on a horse in 50-degree weather, but when it's 19 degrees outside on January 12th, your mini-horse enclosure is flooded, and the horse has no jacket on. Your zookeepers are incompetent, proven liars, which we'll hear about soon. Your location is still in a flood zone. Animal cruelty is causing non-consensual physical, emotional, psychological harm to an animal. Commissioner Director, are you against animal cruelty?
I'm not going to get into a big, big issue.
If you're against animal cruelty, then you'll continue to make choices that group the opposite for us.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the public want to speak? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
How are you? Nicholas Hus, 14 over Brook Road, Somerset, New Jersey, 08873. Pardon my breath, I've been running. I'm speaking up today in behalf of the animals who are contained inside the prison wall of Johnson Park, enslaved with the bare minimum just to keep them alive so alleged animal lovers can gawk at them like a mere object. My God, is this what 2022 has come to? I'm expressing my concern for the pigeons and guinea fowls who are supposed to be housed in a draft-free environment. How do you call a shelter draft-free when it's wallless with the only structural enclosure consisting of one-inch bar fencing on all four sides? Can anyone explain to me how that is supposed to keep animals sheltered from the weather
Rick, anybody?
There are no double-sided walls that can help to hold in heat during the wintertime and help to keep out heat during the summertime, just as you do for your cats and dogs. Flock owners should be responsible enough to provide proper guinea fowl, chicken, turkey, and pig care via housing. Guinea fowl feed is supposed to be available 24/7, especially during the cold winters, in order to help keep them warm at night when they need the calories the most. And for the past three nights, each and every time, I have stopped by the park. When it was closed, I saw nothing. Only thing I did manage to witness was a big frozen block of ice in their water dish. Each guinea fowl needs four square feet of living space per bird, and you have five in there. And I can tell you is the fact that your cage is not 10 feet wide. Matter of fact, you would need a higher amount of square footage than four square feet per bird, because this formula is not counting for the five pigeons you have stuffed in there as well. There have been reports of some guinea fowls known to survive the most frigid of nights, but that does not mean that these birds were comfortable, that they were not stressed out, and they should not be left outdoors without a suitable coop that provides adequate warm and warmth and stability away from the extreme temperatures going in both directions. Again, hot and cold. We're all warm-blooded mammals here, yet none of us would willingly spend our nights out in 7, 9, 12-degree weather, so why are we subjecting these animals to do the same?
Anyone? Voters? Going once, going twice, all right.
Turkeys. Turkeys need five to eight square feet per bird, and you have three large-sized females being forced to stand in a 3x3-foot doorless box. Again, what's going on with the overcrowding? Let's talk about their extra side of space, outdoor, where the minimum requirement is 25 square foot per bird. Being there are three birds, which equals 75 is the requirement, why isn't that there to begin with?
No answers? Thanks.
Why isn't the enrichment or stimuli in any of the guinea fowls, chickens, or turkey environments here from the start? There's no grass, there's too measly purchase, there's just sand. It's looking more like solitary confinement, if you ask me. This is no way to live life, especially when you have Sander the pig, who needs eight square foot of shelter housing that is naturally vented, but instead, he lives in a 3x2 piece of plywood that has a leaky wooden roof to begin with. Come on, Johnson Park, seriously. You guys can do better. If you cared about these animals, you would release them to animal sanctuaries for them to live their life out in peace. Like, this isn't the route to go, man. Like, you look in their eyes, look in their eyes and see that pain that these animals going through. That fox that just moves, he's back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I was there last night, I sat with him for like an hour. I looked in his eyes, and I saw that fear.
Hands up.
And I give you time.
Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion to close? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Eric Pearlman, 105 Hickory Road, Somerset. Just to follow up on a few things that some of the other folks have mentioned about the zoo/haven. One of the things I noticed right off the bat is normally there are normally, if there's an RFP that goes out, there's a lot of documentation on your website. Since this was a no-bid contract, which is fine, I would still expect to see some of the proposals that the vendors have submitted, and I have not seen one thing about that. So can somebody please look into that and make sure that's a public information?
It's a professional service, and it was awarded to a consulting engineer who was
That's right.
going to use Zoo Advisors.
Right, correct. At minimum, there should be a scope of work. Okay, a product scope listed on a public site. Another thing that's come up, and we've mentioned it before, is the Oprah requests. Specifically about the vet records. And we were told that the vet records were destroyed in one of the floods. Now, mind you, I can't imagine that the original vet doesn't have copies of these vet records. So I'm asking you again, and we've asked a number of times, can you please get us copies of the original vet records? Because some of these animals that do go to sanctuaries, it's key for us to know what their previous state was. We just recently were made aware of a number of goats and rabbits that went to a place called Germaine Farm. Okay, I know that we've talked to Rick a number of times about vetting. We've done a number of vetting on the sanctuaries. We can't find anything on Germaine Farm. Okay, it is, besides a tax record that says they're eligible for tax breaks, which a lot of people forget that, plant some corn, whatever. There's nothing about them being credible to handle five goats, 20 rabbits. Can you please let us know? Or if you know now who Germaine Farm is, let me give you some insight. It's an employee's house. Okay? And if you do enough searching, you'll see pictures on the website showing a number of deer antlers hanging in their living room, busts, a bear, a stuck bear. It just doesn't feel right that we're giving animals to this place. So let's look into this Germaine Farm, please. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Rico. Anyone else in the public? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brittany Vanderstein of Jackson, New Jersey. I have worked around and with native and exotic animals since 2018, which has led me here today to speak on behalf of the fox and raccoons residing at Johnson Park Animal Haven.
Can you just speak a little closer to the microphone, please? So this way we could hear you, because I have difficulty hearing it with the mask.
Okay, is this better? Were you guys able to hear my voice?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, no problem. As documented by myself and others, the fox and raccoons have been seen pacing on a repetitive basis. Can anyone answer as to why the fox paces? No comment?
Rick, can you answer that question?
Director, what I can say is both the fox and the raccoons, the history. You ever watch Bill Donahue? I'm going to show. Both the fox and the raccoons were delivered to us by the New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife. They were both confiscated, okay, from other people who had, the fox was taken as a baby and raised by a person. The raccoons, same thing, were taken by someone. They were raised, they were confiscated from a woman who had a leash on the raccoon and were walking the raccoons down the seaside heights boardwalk. So we were approached by New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife asking us, "Could we take these?" because they had determined they were non-releasable. So you can imagine that when an animal imprints on a human, doesn't learn how to fend for itself, releasing it back out into wild is a death wish. We showed Fish and Wildlife what we had available, for those individuals. They certified that that's what they needed, and so then we agreed to help them out, take care of them. So that's what I can tell you about the history of both those animals.
You have a date when they came over? You're not cross-examining, so you had your time. Thank you.
So I know that's the case, like you said, for one of the raccoons, one of the fox. Is that for all of the raccoons? That they all came in as babies from human handling? Every single raccoon?
That is, yes, that is my understanding.
Okay.
That they were all delivered to us through Fish and Wildlife.
So being that Fish and Wildlife does bring these animals to you, it now falls on the part of Johnson Park Animal Haven to supply sufficient enrichment stimulation, being that raccoons are intelligent animals? And, you know, same goes for fox. So now I have to ask you, what specifically does the park provide as stimulation and enrichment for both fox and raccoons? Because if there is a lack of stimulation and enrichment, it can cause zoonosis, which I believe is being displayed by the raccoons and the fox. So please enlighten me on what the enrichment ethic you guys provide?
Look, you know, Director, what I will say is that Fish and Wildlife inspects us continually throughout the year. USDA inspects us continually throughout the year. If they have any changes that they want us or need us to make, we gladly make those that we're in compliance with what they are certifying. Those are the two certifying agencies for the animal havens, okay? We work with them, we work alongside them, to do what it is that they're asking us.
And I also wanted to mention, naturally and distinctively, fox are burrowing animals. They will dig, they will burrow for shelter purposes or to even dig for grub. And I see that the fox is kept on a concrete ground. And I was curious what went through the mind of the park when they decided to put it on concrete? Because that does take away from the natural ability and wishes of a fox.
As Mr. Lear stated, that Fish and Wildlife has seen our facility, and if there are any concerns that we need to be, that need to be addressed, we would follow up on their recommendations.
Okay, I do have a paper speaking about zoonosis that I would love to give to someone keeping documentation. Thank you. I do understand what Fish and Wildlife said, but I do want to make it a point that pacing is never ever a healthy behavior. It's super unhealthy, and you need enrichment. You guys really do. Because you don't have to be a genius to show up to the park and see them, because something is mentally wrong with these animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Motion to close?
No.
Oh, come on up, folks. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi.
Please speak closer to the microphone.
My name's Anna Criselska from Pecanville, New Jersey. I want to thank Commissioner Kenny. And like, thank you for an honest answer about, at the last meeting, Chris asked about the last goat that was pregnant.
I can't hear what she's saying. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
At the last meeting, the last goat that was pregnant, I mean, the last speaker asked about a goat that was pregnant and was missing since August 19. I was told that goat and her baby were fine. So I want to thank you guys for being honest with me. I found out that she passed away the night that I called the park rangers in. And I personally, I regret not speaking out loud for her if she could still be alive right now. And I want to know why? Why was I lied to that she was okay? Why would I ask about her? Why was I told that her and her baby are fine?
Excuse me?
Why was I told that the goat and her baby were okay?
Rick, can you answer that?
You sent the email to Commissioner Kenny, who forwarded it over to us. We responded to you with the information. So I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Before you told me that,
Who?
The park, Kristen. Kristen told me that she was fine. He also told me that the goat that passed away on Thursday from the hurricane, he told me that he was fine for two and a half weeks. For two and a half weeks, I drove between Johnson Park and Johnson Park looking for him, till I found out that he actually passed away. So is that a common practice that you lie to people that come to the park about animals passing away?
So I would say, you know, the, sorry.
Sure.
It's not that we lie, but the people at the park should be answering all the questions when it comes to the care and official information on the animals. They should, those requests should come through whether it's through, you know, the commission or an email is sent to Rick's office or something like, that's an official answer. I can't, I can't. What you get from employees, you know, they're not official answers. I know I'm not saying it the best way, but.
They can't answer on behalf of us here.
They can answer on behalf of us here. Their job, their job should be to direct you to the Rick or direct you to the commissioner to ask the question.
Can I also ask why if that goat went into labor on Tuesday night and they came in Wednesday morning and found out that she had a baby, why did it take until Friday for the vet to come in?
That I don't know. It, you know, it's a tragic situation and, you know, I don't have an answer for that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Nisha Menon, and I reside in Somerset, New Jersey. So I want to start off by thanking everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I would like to use my time to speak for those that unfortunately do not have the same privilege to speak for themselves. So today, I'd like to focus on some of the birds that are held captive at the Johnson's Park Haven, because birds are usually given very little thought, but suffer just as much as any other animal. Birds are warm-blooded animals that have the ability to feel cold, just like us. Chickens, turkeys, and guinea hens all have the desire for ideal temperatures, which should rarely be below 32 degrees Fahrenheit when they have to be out in the open without alternative shelter from the elements. So there are two concerns that I would like to specifically bring up. The first is about the housing that is offered to the birds. So if no supplemental heat is provided, the bare minimum would be a well-insulated, but well-ventilated coop that avoids cold winds. Right now, all they have is something that looks like a cheap doghouse that is too small and completely open on one side. So even if we assume that all the birds at Johnson's Park are cold-weather chickens, which they are not, the most cold that they are comfortable at is at 32 degrees Fahrenheit. But what about nights like this upcoming Saturday night, when it's going to be 9 degrees? Or tomorrow, when most of the day is going to be well below 20 degrees? Chickens are prone to frostbite. I have birds at home, and I can tell you that they hide their illnesses very well. If one of them has an illness or an injury, and they are left out in the cold, they could potentially freeze to death. So my question is this. When we have the opportunity to give these birds to sanctuaries who are already equipped for the winter, why was the welfare of these birds not considered? They are currently perching in the open with no protection against the elements.
We're waiting for the assessment from the consultant, and then we will make our moves according to their recommendations, and how we feel collectively.
And part of the study that we're going to have done is, you know, do we keep it, and we not keep the animals? That's the big question. But if we do keep it, is one of the things, what is our infrastructure? Is our infrastructure suitable for the animals that we have? And if it isn't, then what is the cost to upgrade those structures? And then it becomes a case of, okay, well, is the cost something that we're willing to bear? Or do we go back to, we don't keep it? This is all part of the study that we're looking to have done for the whole animal haven, not just there, but the others, the other one or two animal havens that we have, to make sure that it all meets up to the standards of the teaching. You know, it depends on.
So I guess the concern is just that while this decision is being made and the study is happening, it's very cold. So I guess I'd just like to bring up one other concern, which I'm hoping can be addressed immediately or with, you know, without as much planning or advice from Zoo Advisors. So that is the fact that when temperature drops, water freezes. And just because it gets cold outside, it doesn't mean that the animals don't get thirsty. So I was in the park the other day, and to my surprise, I found that there was an electrical outlet behind one of the fences where the birds were located, and nothing was plugged into it. Meanwhile, each and every animal has a block of ice in their water dish. How do you explain such blatant lack of care when animals are denied something as basic as water? So my question is this. Do anybody who can answer this, why don't we have something as basic and inexpensive as heated water bowls? Can we do this going forward?
Rick?
Yeah, Director, that's something that we can have our electricians come from our trades department, examine that outlet, see if it's functioning. If it's not functioning, what is necessary to get it up and running? Then I can speak with the staff to see what our alternatives are for providing that kind of, exactly what you're suggesting. However, I'll note that during this cold time, you know, the staff is there every day, okay? From, you know, 7:00, 6:00 till 3:30. On the weekends, they're in twice. They're in in the morning, take care of everybody. They're returning in the afternoon, because we understand with the cold weather that everybody needs extra attention, needs water change and those types of things. So during this time, we're being responsive by making sure the staff is in more to address those needs.
Thank you, Rick. It's just that every time I have been there, I have seen ice. So it's obviously not sufficient. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Ashley Bartwick of Franklin Park. So I have a lot to get through, so I'll speak a little quickly. So Mr. Lear said he wasn't sure what Anna was talking about, about the goat deaths. So I'll just go through that very fast. Anna visited the park twice daily over the summer because she's especially interested in goat births. So five of the goats gave birth, and this was about the last one. So it worked for one baby. She was then struggling to give birth to the other one. And Anna watched this for something like two or three days trying to get her veterinary care. Called the park ranger. Finally, she, they agreed to bring the animal to her. He came and he said, he later told her, "Oh, the goat is fine, the veterinary took her." So Mr. Lear has said, well, you know, or someone else said, "Well, it's not for them to give the official answer. It's for Mr. Lear to give the official answer." Problem with that is that we don't get them from Mr. Lear. I mean, he knows how many times I've come to his office, asked him for a meeting. When the flood happened, it took us many days to even get an official statement. The problem with that is we, we're the people who are in the park twice a day for years. We noticed the day of the flood that there were over a dozen animals missing, and we have photos of every single individual one of them. So when we go to him to say, "Well, where are these dozen animals?" and don't get a reply, we go to his office, and he shuts the shades, then we have to show up here. So that's the reason for it. And that's something that I'd like to bring up. So these are the fallow deer. And I'm sorry, I can't give you a better picture of them. So this was two days before the flood. This is something like 13 fallow deer that I counted. And these are the five babies. Every single one of these five babies was gone the day after the flood, okay? So we've asked, and we've asked, what happened to them? We still haven't gotten a single reply from them, despite that it was promised to us the last time we were here. The problem with that is, you know, we've seen some suggestion that the hemorrhagic virus took them. The hemorrhagic virus doesn't affect fallow deer. There's plenty of information from all sorts of animal britches of the government stating that. So I want to get into some of the other things that were talked about. The first thing is, you know, that the zoo is inspected by the USDA, the Department of Fish and Wildlife. By the way, we have those, some of those records in our Oprahs, and they do show these missing fallow deer that we still haven't got an explanation on. So we want to know why are we, just going through the minimum of what the USDA and Fish and Wildlife says. We want good care of these animals, not just. the bare minimum where they're suffering, they're having zoonosis, and that's okay, they're having fat blindness, and that's okay, just because the USDA says, all right, we're selecting the bare minimum. Also, I, we didn't really get an answer about Germaine Farm. You know, when we proposed for these animals to go to sanctuaries, they did a lot of due diligence on them. They were required to submit their nonprofit status, they were required to submit a number of documents, Mr. Lear did site visits, and we want to know if any of that was done for Germaine Farm, because he told us, oh, we sent three goats over there, and then we were told, oh, the rabbits were sent over there. So we had let him know if due diligence was done on them, the same way it was done for the other sanctuaries.
Yes.
What, what, what due diligence was done for them?
So Director, we have a long history of working with Germaine Farm, they've been very supportive of our work, they've been very helpful in times when we needed extra hands.
Were they employees of the Parks Department?
Mr. Germaine's a former employee and has experience, okay, in taking care of animals, particularly at Johnson Park, so he's a well-known.
Mr. Lear, I'm sorry, I'm running out of time. I'm so sorry. What happened to these five fallow deer?
Did I meet with you?
I have to answer your questions, ma'am. We're not going to go back and forth, cross-examining here. We're not, we're a court of law.
Did I meet with you?
I'll, I'll answer his question. You met with us and set up a time. Let's not delve into questions of the past, let's go into the future of the animals, to talk about where we can place them. So now that that's not happening anymore, we have to go back to the questions of the past. And no, those questions were never answered. So we do need a meeting at this point. We need answers to these questions of what happened to these fallow deer, because we know it's not any hemorrhagic virus from them. So there's no more answer there. So it was earlier stated that it was in the best interest of the animals for them to be released to a sanctuary. It was stated by Mr. Lear, it was stated by the commissioners. It's still in the best interest of the animals for them to be released to the sanctuary. Just because the USDA says it's okay for animals to have zoonosis, being in what used to be the bear cage of Monty the Bear, who also had zoonosis, if anyone can remember that from the 80s, we don't think that's okay. Time's up.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Peter Ortiz, I'm in Newark, New Jersey. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, here on behalf of the animals from Johnson Park. One question, or one of your responses came up, and I want to follow up on that. You said you were waiting for the consultant before making your next move. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So my question is, how long will the animals have to wait?
We're waiting for the report from our consultant to what we should do.
Right, and how long will that take?
I can't answer that, so we're trying, we're hoping that it's soon, but we want them to make an assessment that's, have enough time to make a good assessment.
Right, if you realize that single-digit temperatures out there, and it's freezing, and these animals are inadequate facility, they're not being taken care of, their needs are not being met, and I just don't see any urgency on this. I'm sure if these animals were your own dogs or cats, that there wouldn't be any wait, that this would be addressed tonight. So again, can you give us some, some timeframe, like within the next week, two weeks?
I, I, I can't give you an honest answer there. I don't know. Would I like to see it sooner than later, yes, but we have, we're waiting for the report back from them.
Okay, is that something you can follow up with them on tomorrow?
I can ask and see where we're at. I don't know what kind of answers they're going to give me.
Well, I just want to finish off. I mean, we all have choices, right? The county has a choice, and, you know, the county can decide whether it wants to allow these animals to live in these pleasurable conditions. It can decide whether it wants to move them to a safe place where they'll receive the care that they deserve. So the bottom line is, what is the county going to do, and how long is it going to take? Because it's clear these animals don't have time, and there are facilities ready to take them, there's sanctuaries that actually care about these animals, and treat them as they should be treated. So this is on, this is on you. And again, I'd just like to see more urgency on this, because these animals don't have time. There's not, there's no time left. We can't come back another month and have this discussion again, because there's going to be more dead animals, and we're going to have, we're just going to keep repeating ourselves and saying, when are they going to be moved? So I just urge you to just get back to this consultant and have a firm date within the week of what to be done, what's to be done. Otherwise, I'm just afraid we're just going to find, we're going to be left with more animals that are deceased or just in bad shape than they are today. And it's the least we could do, you know? It's the least we could do. And they can't speak for themselves. And it's clear that they're being exploited. They never asked to be put in this position. They never asked to be placed in a facility where there's some form of human entertainment. They just want to live like we do, just like our dogs and cats. And none of us would treat our own pets this way. So I just ask you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Nico, and I'm from Edison. I'm here with my son, Ivan, who's 10 years old. I'm here to argue with people who say that zoo, a zoo is helpful, entertaining, or educational for children. I'm here to disagree. This zoo that we're talking about is showing children that it's somehow enjoy an enjoyable experience to witness animals in pain. Every child walking through the park can see the pain and hurt on the animals' faces. They can see the difference between squirrels that run free and animals behind fences with no shelter, often limping and showing others signs of distress. If we have to raise our children the right way, we cannot continue to watch this place mistreat animals. We are not teaching our children empathy, kindness, or even basic animal handling. We're teaching our children to look at something in their eye and forget how it's feeling. We are counteracting the basic instinct to empathize. We are also teaching them disobedience and ignoring consent. These, there are signs all over the park saying, do not feed animals, but the patrons are constantly ignoring these signs. My son, if my son was to go every day and see these animals, and for example, if this pregnant goat grew bigger and bigger, just to watch her die in childbirth, are you the one explaining to him what happened? If my son was to get a cast of a baby fallow deer at the park, are you there to tell him when one of the, one of the baby deer is gone, or probably dead from the eye of her quarter? Some of you will say that it's a good experience for children to see these animals anyway, and this is the only chance for them to see the animals in real life. Again, I disagree. There are so many sanctuaries, wildlife refuges, and so many other areas that is the animals. Our children can see an adequate display of care of animals even in their own homes. You can see better, animal care spending, spending a day with your children, monitoring at an animal shelter. Some might argue that low-income families in the neighboring cities like New Brunswick might take their children there, because it is within the walking distance. But that's not true. No one walks their family across the bridge to see these animals suffering. School kids in New Brunswick don't even know about this place. Lastly, this zoo is not even pretending to educate our children. Everything is mislabeled. The mini-horse has been labeled as a llama, for as long as I can remember. The sign about pigs and deer signs are written in Polish, really lover. So my question is, if this zoo is not for educating or entertaining children, then what is it for? Anybody? What's this doing for our children? Have you taken your children or grandchildren to the zoo? Any of you over here? Are you in evacuation plans yet? Is the county purchasing horse trainers for evacuation, for the purpose of evacuation plans? Or is the van the only way of animal transportation here? Who determines that the blankets were appropriate for horses? They are filthy, constantly falling off and restricting their movement. All of these questions need to be answered, and you need to see this from a mother's point of view. You need to see from the children's point of view. We're teaching the children to desensitize the pain of other living beings. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Charlie Cradville, once again, from New Brunswick. I have a lot of items, but I do want to take just a moment to say thank you to everybody who's been coming to this microphone and enlightening us and asking good questions. I really do appreciate your advocacy on behalf of the animals. I'm wearing my Fresh Grocer shirt today, because I'd like an update on the former Fresh Grocer supermarket that the county is now renting. I took a peek in there. It looks like it's still an abandoned supermarket. What's the update on that, turning that into something productive?
At this point, I don't know if we can answer that question, Mr. Cradville. I don't know, is Carl here?
No, I can give you a little heads up. So under the prosecutor's portion, state the course that are being involved in there, the architectural designs are just been submitted, actually, this week, because of so many changes. So we're in a process right now, the landlord that's the owner of the complex has to still get a lot of debris out of there, has to be swept away and ready for us, and then the building design will take place, quite some months down the line.
County's already paying for it, right? Space, January 1st.
Joe, can you answer that?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check around.
That's what I was told would happen. I would like an update on the contamination at the hole in the ground, the hub. I'd like to know why clean dirt was brought to that site, if it's contaminated. And I'd also like an update on another contaminated site that CME Associates has been in charge of remediating, the old Wilson Deck. Are those, has the, you know, contamination been remediated, or not yet?
I can't answer that. No, or, oh, wrong, I'm sorry.
Yes, Charlie. Actually, on tonight's agenda, we awarded a contract to do the injection wells to treat the old oil plume, thirty wells, Patterson Street, the surface lot, some well trenches. The plume did not extend to where they filled the site with soil. That's for the hub. And then, once again, we are building the signal air on the other side. But does that answer your question?
It does. The realignment expected to be done by the end of the year, the road project? Is that fair?
I am, yeah, hopeful. There's this supply chain issue, which is wreaking havoc with construction, so with certainty, I can't answer that.
Understood.
But that's our target.
I'm, I'm gonna have to apologize for not giving my full attention to the meeting. There's been at least one additional shooting in my neighborhood. There was a murder previously. I'm here to raise an issue about addiction that took place last week. I've reached out to the sheriff, and I'm trying to find out, you know, this house that everybody was evicted from Thursday, went up in flames on Sunday night, and, you know, the authorities have been responding there over and over again, and, you know, I'd like to understand, you know, what's going on. I know the sheriff's not here. Is there somebody here, maybe Public Safety, who could address the eviction at 146 Townsend in Brunswick?
Charlie, that eviction was pursuant to a court order, because it was a foreclosure, which is the reason that the Sheriff's Department was engaged, conducted a foreclosure, and the foreclosure was through a mortgage company. And that mortgage company sought the court order, received the court order, and directed the Sheriff's Department to conduct the eviction, which is what they did. And it was actually turned over to that mortgage company. We didn't take control of it.
I got you. I just have to, limited amount of time. I want to ask if it's true that the Puerto Rican Action Board, I'm sorry, limited amount of time. I understand if the clock's still running while you're talking. So Puerto Rican Action Board, is it true that they're going to be leaving New Brunswick? Also concerned about that redevelopment project pushing out them from 90 Jersey Avenue, it's also pushing out dozens of small businesses. This is Mr. Kelso's client, Actford Builders, who gave 30 days' notice that everybody has to be out of 100 Jersey Avenue. And I'd like to know if that also means that the Puerto Rican Action Board is going to leave town. My sources tell me that they're looking at a spot in East Brunswick, and that would be a huge loss for New Brunswick. I know the work that they do is really important. I also want to find out who's going to pay for the special election that's been required now in Old Bridge, Ward 4, March 22. I'm asked in writing, Mr. Kelso, that question hasn't gotten an answer yet, who's going to pay for that? Is it the county? Is it Old Bridge?
Time's up.
Is it somebody else? And thank you. Who's got a COVID testing site that we can walk to in the park?
Thank you for your time.
Locking all that cars, we need it.
Time is up. Is there a motion to close?
Can I get answers?
Your time is up.
I asked the questions before the five minutes.
Time is up. All in favor? Opposed? Motion counted. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye, opposed, and adjourned.